Good evening. I'd like to call the North Branford Board of Education meeting for February 23rd, 2023, to order at 7 o'clock. Roll call, Mary?
Here.
Zachary Canada, Kim Dawson, Victoria. Salute to the flag, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any visitors' comments? It's a light agenda tonight. We might be out of here pretty early.
Student reps, it's all you, hon. I have a few things to report on. At first, the NBHS Forensics class participated in a field trip to the University of New Haven on February 7th. Science teacher Mr. Bicklehop organized this event. He teaches integrated science for grade nine and forensics, a popular science elective for grades 11 and 12. UNH has an extensive forensic program and is a college major. NBHS Field Hockey members were recently recognized by the National Field Hockey Coaches Association for their academic achievements. Sienna Brigance, Kiana Criscolo, and Gabby Sinersha were named Scholars with Distinction. Peyton Kaminski, Morgan Lucibello, Lindsay Anofrio, and Sophia Toto were named to the National Academic Squad. Additionally, NBHS Junior Sam Gott broke a school record during the CIAC Class S State Indoor Track Meet, finishing second in the 300 meters with a time of 36.04. And lastly, the School Day College Board SAT is scheduled for all juniors at NBHS on March 22nd. Juniors will preregister for the Align assessment prior. Juniors will be provided additional support and guidance during advisory sessions during March. As in the past, embedded tasks and learning activities occur during coursework, especially during their junior year. Data gleaned from the fall PSAT is also used to adjust the curriculum.
Wow, very busy.
Any questions? Any questions for our student rep?
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Somebody's dialing in a question. We'll take that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You are free to go.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right, then. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. We've got minutes from the January 19th Board meeting and the February 9th Board meeting, a couple resignations and an appointment and a field trip. So we can have discussion on any of them after somebody makes a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the February 23rd, 2023 Board of Education meeting as committed. Second, any discussion on any of them?
I just have one on page two.
Page two of the first?
Of the first one, yes. We talked about the living dates are happening.
I'm sorry, moving dates.
That we have the living dates that we need to, but we're not doing that.
No.
Do we have to do anything?
No, we took care of it the last meeting.
Right, but I didn't know if we had to adjust the...
No, once we get a definitive date, then we'll come back and revisit. And then you can take action when we get an actual date, but we're not even close.
The next page was, we were going through the... We were going to go with what the building committee said. Those were the tentative dates pending upon...
Yeah, I know that.
But did we have to take away the day officially in a board meeting?
Gotcha.
That's what I think, right? What you're asking?
Yeah, I, yes, I understand we're going to move it, but I didn't know if we had to adjust it, like a minute.
No, no.
Good, okay. Well, then, there's a couple resignations. Do you want to speak to those before we vote?
I will be brief. First, Diane Arthais, 36 and a half years of dedicated service to our Special Ed Department in North Branford. Children go through the system. She's just been an amazing educator. And we're certainly going to miss her. She's been a great person and friend to many in the community and has done an amazing, amazing job. So I think we're going to retain her in some form after she retires. That's on the QT. Thank you, Diane. And Leah DiStefano, she is an administrator now in another district. She had her sights set on that. She's worked incredibly hard. She was an amazing teacher at Tuket for 16 years. And this is something that she had as a goal for the past several years. Congratulations to her. We're certainly going to miss her, but we wish her well. And lastly, we had the hiring of Emily Bissin, who student taught with us and was in a neighboring district, came back to us, and we were very fortunate to hire her, so.
That's great.
There are three happy resignations and an appointment, so.
Well, God bless Diane, 36 and a half years, that's...
And we'll recognize our retirees at the end of the year, so.
Okay, then can I have a roll call vote, Mary?
Sure.
Vice Chair Nelson? Yes. Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Sienna Bosama?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
Then we move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, before we do that, there was, on the field trip, the request from the high school. There were any questions from London, not from London, but the... London calling in, to London in Paris in April of '24. Heidi Ostermiller is here from the high school, who will be heading up that trip. Principal Steffler is here.
Well, I can speak from experience. She's been doing this for years. She's been running these trips for years. I don't really have any questions or concerns. She crosses her t's and dots her i's, and I think this is a fabulous trip.
I think the board really was so...
How many years have you been doing these trips?
Well, 975, if you ask my students. It would be the third time that we go on a trip on this venue.
I think it's fabulous.
On this venue, in Paris. And, you know, obviously, we missed a couple of years with the pandemic. And it's really great that the board is supporting our students getting back out and taking part in these trips. We talked about assisting with financial need. That will certainly be my charge in working with any youngster similar to the middle school with their trip to DC. And we will do everything in our power to make sure that the students that really want to go are able to go.
How many are looking to take?
Well, last time we went, we had 22, which is a harmless number. Right now, we're looking around to 11, but that's because we're in early stages. The kids are sort of on hold, because I've said we cannot move forward until we have full board approval. I have heard also that there are several middle school students, eighth graders, who are becoming in high school next year, and they're interested as well, which is really nice.
So it's open from 9 to 12?
Yes.
Nice. That's a fabulous trip.
So I'm, we do not have a motion on for this board meeting, but I'm looking at the nodding heads, thinking that we are all in support of this.
It's the consent agenda. It's still, we did, didn't we, just approve?
So... Yes, we did, yeah. Like, strike that from the minutes. Thank you, you've approved our trip. Set sail.
Can be sailed, are they sailing?
We're good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll start with my report and try not to. Board briefs are attached. I'm obviously not going to go through those. A very busy time with, you know, preparations for the standardized testing. And we're moving into March, obviously, next week, so things are rolling along. The high school seniors are getting their acceptances back, and a lot of good things are happening for a lot of our students. So we're, it's a happy time of the year. We haven't had a snow day, obviously, so I don't want to jinx us next week. Looks a little dicey, but to be continued with the weather for next week. Any questions of the administrators on any of the communications? Anything that you've observed or seen or...
I love seeing the little ones dressed up for the 100th day.
Yeah, those were adorable.
They were so cute.
They were adorable. Okay, that being said, financial report, Ms. Wong.
So just a quick update on the new financial system. We are still working on the setup for the payroll and human resources module of Munis. This training is going much slower than the financial side because it is very detailed. And we want to make sure that the decisions we're making are the right ones. There are also a lot of new features to look at and consider. And not only are we looking at the features themselves and what they can do, but we want to make sure that if we do move forward to implement these, that they're going to give the building administrators and our directors and our payroll person the information that they're going to need. So some of the things that are being considered is the possibility of an electronic time card, an electronic Personnel Action Form, to get rid of paper. Also, electronic notifications that the employees or new hires would receive. We would be able to send out the forms that that individual will need to complete, and then we would get it back electronically. Also, maybe even looking at the possibility of not needing frontline anymore. But we're still at the very beginning stages of that, and we need a lot more information before we can go through. On the financial side, the reporting is still awful. And most of it, I download into Excel, and then I have to format it and sort it into the way that I want to present it. So the financial report that you have in front of you, that we'll take a look at now, is an Excel download. It is not directly from the financial system. The report itself is one that you've seen in past months. Again, there's a blue line to the right of the page. To the right of that blue line, I've listed anticipated expenditures, and those are really our payroll encumbrances. I'm doing those off of an Excel spreadsheet, if you remember, because being, still working in two systems, Munis and Alio, we can no longer encumber in the financial system because it's too separate. So right now, we're anticipating a little over $1 million for June 30th. Of course, I anticipate that to decline as we go through the next few months. We will continue to monitor oil, natural gas, electricity, and diesel because, as you know, those prices are very volatile at this point. Really nothing new to report as far as the objects that I want to call out to you. Again, it's the health insurance. I am anticipating that we will get a little over $500,000, so that will pretty much wipe out the deficit that is showing on this report. And we do still have one more payment for the medical buyout. That's for the employees who have chosen to take a payment in lieu of receiving our health insurance. So that will be made in the beginning of June for those employees that did elect that. And I'm anticipating that'll be around $84,600. And we're just going to continue to reiterate the importance of putting in requisitions as soon as the need for an item or service is known. It's been kind of an uphill battle to change the way of thinking that we need an invoice before we can put a requisition in the system. And the importance of that is the accuracy of our encumbrances really reflects directly on how accurate our projected balance for June 30th is, so.
Are you, did this program, Munis, not turn out to be what you expected?
I went along with Munis because that's what was agreed to with the town. The one thing that I am disappointed in is that when I questioned Tyler Technologies about Munis and its capabilities, I was told that the reporting function was far and away more than I would ever need. And clearly, that is not the case. So every opportunity I get, I remind Tyler of that statement, so.
I don't know that you, I mean, I can't speak for anybody else, but there was a comment made in our Communication Committee meeting by the financial person on the town side that kind of seemed like he was a little frustrated with it as well.
He is.
I mean, I can't speak for him, but that's what I got from his little...
I do include him on some of my emails to Tyler. There's a few higher-ups that I've emailed quite frequently.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah.
Just asking.
Yeah, so he is in agreement.
I thought so, okay. Well, thank you. I'm sorry it's taking more time.
Want to do the food service?
Oh, food service, yes.
Update.
So that is moving along. The food service RFP is a very lengthy process. I spent the majority of the day today gathering different types of documentation. The state provides us with a template RFP. That's 45 pages long. And in addition to that, there are several schedules and exhibits that I have to attach. So I'm not complete with it yet, but I am working on that. And the goal is to have it to the state for their review by early March. And then hopefully, it will be blessed, and we will be able to put it out for a proposal, I'm hoping, mid-March.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, curriculum instruction. Carter.
All right, I have two updates for you, so I'll start with the K-3 reading waiver. So that's a state initiative, really a statute that requires all local Board of Educations, school districts to adopt a formalized K-3 reading program that's approved by the state. Currently, there are five programs the state has officially endorsed as approved, and we do not have one of those in place. So for districts that don't have one of those five in place, they offer you the ability to apply a waiver to explain what you're doing in your district to address foundational reading, which is phonics decoding comprehension, that type of thing. So it's a lengthy process. You detail what you're doing. You show student scores over the trend of a few years, how they're doing and improving. And the state is supposed to make a decision on whether they grant you that waiver or what they do next. Nobody really knows. I can tell you that in districts across the states, there is a lot of conjecture and frustration with this mandate. There have been some surveys to districts, and of all the districts, 85% of the districts in Connecticut are not using the state-approved. So it's going to result in something. I don't know what the next step is, but I'm confident with how we've applied our waiver. Things that we're doing, as you know, over time, we're doing Readers and Writers Workshop. We have Foundations Program, HEGREDE. We use a Level Literacy Intervention Program and the use of IREDDI. Those are all things that we use consistently and have over time that are in these areas and should fit the requirement of what the state's expecting us to do. And as you know, we've had some successful literacy at the TBS level. They've been a school of distinction, specifically in the area of reading and moving some of the groups that have a lag behind in Special Ed or low ICS populations, moving those forward, which is kind of what the state is looking for. So just giving the update that we have followed suit with the requirements of that statute. We're waiting to hear back. Those, the waiver process was due at the end of February, so I'm not sure the timeline of when we expect to hear the next steps. So we'll communicate that with you when we hear anything new on that. Yeah, that. So far, the ones they've approved, there's one called Core Knowledge Language Arts, one called Intro to Reading from Hope Mifflin, one called Wonders from McGraw-Hill, and My View Literacy Program. These are all relatively new programs with publication dates of 2020, 2022.
Isn't that kind of unusual, because they don't have any data to say that it's working?
Yes, so if you, if any of you are interested and you kind of, you go online a little bit and dig into that, you're going to see that there's a lot of frustration from districts, from superintendents, school levels of just saying that the state is reaching beyond. It's the local board's decision to make. These, the state shouldn't be saying what's approved and what's not approved. So I'm not sure where that's going to end up, but I think they're really trying to push for a solid kind of science of reading program. You've heard that debate of, you know, going back in time to science of reading, whole language versus those. So we have the elements, and we have, and that's a credit to what we've done over time. It's just a question of how they rule on that. Be interesting to see. They've made it difficult. The waiver process is difficult. It's, you know, it's probably a 30-page submission that every district has to do and pulling that over time and really looking at. So we'll see where it ends.
Thank you.
We're following along.
Program studies.
My next piece for you is just to update you on the high school program studies. Of course, Lee and Mr. Steffler are here if I, you know, don't do anything justice. But you have that in front of you. The course registration process is underway for high school students and eighth graders. Highlights to just give to you, there are clear connections to the Mission of Graduate and to SOAR within that program. The course offerings are aligned to district goals. We are meeting graduation requirements set forth by the state. And there are several updated descriptions in course offerings. Things that I can just update you that are new. We have the expansion of the University Connections, which include the successful UConn ECE program that we've had in place for a while. We have a partnership with Southern Connecticut State University, the ECE program, and newly awarded Scholars Program as well. As you know, from, I think, a board meeting two meetings ago, there's a new Social Studies elective in the Roman and Medieval History, which is an offering to students. We have a new elective in African-American, Black, Puerto Rican, and Latino Studies within our program as required by the state. And additionally, business electives, as we talked about recently in our budget process. Those electives are popular and offered to students in entrepreneurship and sales, investing in the stock market. And some updates to the Tech Ed program. These again are offered to students 9 through 12. Transportation Systems and Automotive, and a new course in Home Repair, which is kind of giving students some basic skills and knowledge around electricity plumbing and home repairs. So it's pretty comprehensive as you look through it, from levels, content areas.
I just, the UConn classes? I've seen them in here, and there's a fee for those. My son wasn't aware of it, not that he wouldn't have, I don't get involved with what he signs up for, but it would be nice if, like, you sent something to parents to let them know that in September, they're going to have to hand over a check. Because I was shocked. I had no vote. So, I mean, I don't know if you can make a notation or some kind of warning because I guess they voted on what they wanted, if they want an AP class or a UConn.
Right.
And they picked UConn, which, you know, that was their decision, but there was no warning about the fee. So it would be nice for parents to get that warning, because it's not, it was quite a fee. It wasn't just like...
Wasn't $10?
No.
You get that right from UConn.
What was that?
You get it right from UConn, so I can relate.
Yeah, no, so, and it wasn't quick, like, I had to, we had to put it online, and we had to do it, like, by the next week. And I know quite a few kids dropped out of that class after the first week. And my question would be, did they drop out because their parents were like, "What?" So, and then that kind of screws them up if they need those classes to apply for colleges. That's a good point.
Good suggestion. I'm sure we can include that more directly.
So the UConn, the prequalifying is the, obviously, scores leading up to that.
And the instructor is trained.
Is trained by UConn. I'm guessing it's not the regular cost of an on-campus course?
No, it's discounted, but for most, for quite a few of the kids, unless you're going to a state school, those credits don't really count, like, so they're not going to count for quite a few kids who go to private colleges. So, like, you're paying money for these credits, and your kid's not going to have that, like, it's not...
It's experience.
Right, it is experience, but like, an AP class...
You have to score three or higher.
It's free. If you did the AP English class, it would be free to your child.
Pay for the test.
The test, you pay for the test, though.
Yes, we only pay for one test. So if you pay for one, they get all the other ones for free. So it's like, well, I'd rather pay $90 than have my kid take three or four AP tests than... It just, it's how you look at it. So again, it's not my decision, but it would be nice to have a warning.
So, give me the price of the UConn class, was it?
It was like, oh...
So one...
It was like $170, but then if you take two, like, you take a credit and a half, it was like more than that. So it was like, God, I don't even know, I don't remember paying it, but it was like, I think it was like, you know, it was $200.
For the class?
Right, and it was just like a week's notice, so for some parents, that's a lot. Absolutely, so.
Okay.
And the AP test is 90 for multiple tests, because we only, you only pay for one. I guess you supplement the rest.
We, you pay for the rest. Thank you.
Well, it's supplemented by the board, yes.
By the board.
So.
So you pay, but thank you. All right, great suggestion. Anything else, Dr. Watts, or you?
I think I've said enough.
Good? If you, if you look at page 8 and 9, it's really a quick synopsis of the courses under the discipline versus, and then you could spend more time with it. And they always do a great job designing, putting it all together. They do it in themselves.
Yeah, we're always looking at it.
Okay, moving along. Kindergarten enrollment, we had 102 right now. Will be enrolling right up through the summer, so, you know, I'm guessing, projecting 120 if we get to that.
102 at this time of the year is...
It's a little higher.
That's high, so that's good.
Yeah.
We're on projection. At last, this past kindergarten class was 87, so we're going back to what we were, which is the typical between 100 and 120 is usually what we have.
So do we drop any kindergarten classes this year? Like, there's less classes or there's just smaller?
No, it's just smaller for this year. But it, see, so our first grade class is actually larger. We have 134 kids. And kindergarten was 87, and I think COVID played a big role in that. So if you actually average it out, it's a typical enrollment group. But now this group coming in with 102 already, I mean, we're on track for being around 120 probably by the time September is.
Wow. How's the process of it being online?
It's been very smooth. It really has. Yeah, it's been, it's been going well. The parents are able to upload the forms, you know, at their own convenience from work at home, and we haven't really had any issues, so it's been nice.
Any questions on kindergarten? Okay, Advanced Manufacturing, I don't have an update right now. All of our focus has been on the high school and the move-in date. So we'll continue to, you know, pursue funding avenues and updates on that. We did pare it down from 10,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet, the building size, because of more research to our visit to Platte Tech. So that will be a significant savings for the town. Obviously, if you're going to nearly half the capacity in the building, it's going to be a student or so. We met with the town manager and members of the council, the Communications Committee, last week, and shared our board budget presentation with them, answered questions. We had a healthy conversation about capital and monies that have been expended. So that was, I think, a healthy exercise, at least for awareness of why we are asking for a large amount because of certain things that played out with our 2% fund and how we funded our budget last year. And now we're, we're having to find our way out of that hole. And that's the reality of that. Renovation project, we're just, we're working on punch list items. There's a couple of major things that we're working through right now. I think we'll come to consensus on that with the committee and the architect and Gil Bain. But again, there's no move-in date right now. There will not be a move-in date until we all come together in agreement that, you know, this TCO is met and that our architect, Rusty Malik, is in favor of it, and he'll sign off on it. And the town will sign off on it. So it's going along. It looks beautiful. We're going to get a beautiful building, but we just don't want to get into the building and then have to have conversations that, you know, if we waited another two weeks, we wouldn't have had these issues, so. Slow and steady. Any questions on that? And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Then we move on to committee reports. Negotiations, no meeting. Budget and operations, no meeting. Curriculum, no meeting. Pension, no meeting. Policy, Beth.
Not until Tuesday, 12.
Perfect, aces.
Oh, we do have, I think, eight hard copy policies for you that can be picked up or we can get to.
I already have the agenda for policy 24.
Okay, okay.
I was unable to attend last meeting. No worries. Building Committee, I think we covered. Communication, we covered. There's no new business? You do?
So there was a little bit of talk at the Lincoln about them parking over near the Walker House, the Vantage Police Station, which is... And I requested that they figure out where they can park so it doesn't interfere.
Right, with the bus.
Ours and buses. And one of the things I noticed that, is, no. And one of the things I noticed that there is no signage there that says, it says Orger House and it says Dog Park, but there's nothing that says that-
Oh, you just threw me a soft word.
That we pay for renovation, we have education.
That's a good idea.
I'm talking about to you two, whether they put it below the Orger House or something that, and had, because-
I'm so happy you're-
A lot of people in town don't know that the Orger House is being used.
Yes, so what, what we have and what is, was constructed to our, our tech ed department, they built a wishing well. And in the center of the wishing well, New Haven Sign has our program, I'm looking at, Sarah, that will identify that, you know, our program is there. What does the sign say? It says?
Um, I believe it references to the Orger House, our Frankfurt Public School, eighteen to twenty-two transition program.
So that will, that will go in the center of the, of the wishing well that the kids built. And then Mr. Florio has been doing the electrical, so we're going to have a light on, on both sides. So if you drove by in the wintertime and saw the beautiful decorations, Mr. Boudreau did all, did all of that, and then John has done all the electrical and everything. So that will be going in sooner than later. I'm hoping within the next month.
Spring, so we could borrow a footing to hold it there. So be done in the springtime and a couple of things we want to do around there. Little area for the trash cans, like, we'll have to put them off the street, the wishing well, and put up a mailbox for them to do at the same time.
Yep.
That's awesome.
But we, and the kids did a beautiful job. I'll get pictures, and I'll have it at the March meeting, of the wishing well. And the design that we gave them, the, the size of the wishing well-
It's going to be a planter in the middle.
In the middle, too.
So they'll be able to have flowers in the spring and summertime.
Oh, nice. I love that.
Yep.
Come on, Beth.
I love that.
I just didn't want to, I was never, no.
Yeah, no, thank you, Beth.
Yeah, that was great.
That slipped my mind.
No, speaking like, they wanted to park enough, they, they want, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not aware of this, that-
The vendors want to, because there's no parking.
Right, so they want to park it and park.
And I brought up that, this is a school program, that's a problem.
And I just thought of charging them, and I'll use that money for my budget.
So will they be parking there? Are we going to have any problems?
Deputy, I took the, I'm definitely to call this.
Yeah.
And he's arranging, and they're going to be parked, so it doesn't interfere with the buses.
Right, our loop, right. And he'll call me. He's really good.
Yeah, and he said you can call him, too.
Yep.
But they're not going to have as many vendors as we have at the high school.
Yeah.
But just so that they're not parking and interfering with-
Right, especially with the, with the bus, I mean, like, that piece of stuff.
Right, right.
Right.
Well, that's great.
Thank you.
Good idea, Beth. Glad you guys are right on topic already. All right, anything for the good of the board?
I have something for that, too. Well, I happened to pick up my grandson at the intergenerational book club that Shelley Thompson and Harry Simon do. It's very interesting what they've been doing over the last couple of weeks is having the kids go read to resources. And I also, Mr. Rorx, I happened to take a phone call from Summer Room. Miss Summer?
Summer Room.
And it was very nice, I guess, because of practice seniors where the teachers call up, and it isn't anything bad, it's to say something good. And she happened to talk to me because my daughter is in a little bit of a home, but she knew I leave a message, so she, I thought it was going to be nice that instead of, because I remember having to call parents for-
Oh, yeah, when the teachers call, you're like, oh, God.
It's not a good, what did you do? Unless your teachers call and say something positive.
Yeah, it's great. That's, that's great.
So if you have to make the dad phone call, she'll get it.
Just so she's not home, it'll be a whole life.
Now, this would be a-
Yeah.
No, that's a great idea. Anything else?
I got to the glow party at Tocqueville, and we'll treat a ton of, um, the staff to a great job, and the kids all had a really fun time.
That's great.
And I was still the only adult dressed up there to follow the winner member from last year that I was the one. They need to work on that next year, this year. That's not true. Some of my accessories this year, but I want full outfits next year. Oh, I have my earrings. She did. She had my earrings.
I have my own outside.
Oh, you were just doing hard, you mean? All right, then I guess our next regular, regular board of education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 16, 2023. So take your wisher here. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Carefully, everybody. Thank you.